Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. Entertained a motion for the approval of a regular meeting of August 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Yes?
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have three public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at that particular location, and anyone wishing to speak in favor is afforded a similar opportunity; then those wishing to speak against are given an opportunity to speak against. So with that in mind, the first public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow recreational facility 9423 Mercantile. Is that applicant here? Would you come forward and identify yourself or the clerk, please? Right over here, at this podium here. It's tough being the first guy in the barrel, isn't it?
Yeah, first time here, sir.
And if you'd identify yourself or the clerk, please.
Sure, my name's Dave Granchi. I'm president of the Culvers Fastpitch Organization.
Tim Shaker, landlord at 9423 Mercantile Drive.
And Jessica Caffia Corlett. I'm a board member of Concord Girl Softball.
Okay, and give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
We have four tournament teams that are in our organization, and we like to use it to practice indoors when the weather doesn't cooperate.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion and allow for questions of the administration. Anything the administration would like to add?
Nothing at this time.
So you've read the conditions that are in the staff report?
Correct.
And since the landlord's here, we're going to ask about the striping of the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, you agree to do that?
Of course.
Of course. So commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Where are you practicing now?
We practice outdoors, and then last winter, so we had one tournament team last winter, and we traveled to Eastlake to go to, I think it was called the dugout, and then we also went to Lost Nation Sports Complex. But now that we have four teams, we want to just have our own.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, commissioners? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Good luck.
You're all set.
Good luck.
That was easy, huh? It was like hitting a fast pitch. Second public hearing, conditional use permit to allow commercial recreation facility at 7850 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Rick Smith, operations director, Great Lakes Mall.
Okay, and what do you want to do at that location?
The location is currently Zoned C2, and we're looking for a C3 amusement for that.
And that's on the Dix corridor, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, it was constructed, actually, when we erected the Dix corridor in the Dix building about three years ago. It's relatively new space.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
No, just to clarify that the zoning classification is actually B2 general business. Not to confuse the classification you mentioned.
If you misspeak again, we're going to have Tony come here next time.
Going in for him.
I know.
He's got the mustache.
The same mustache.
You're on his behalf. He should be back in about a month.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with two conditions.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item 3 is tabled, is that right? That's the Sky Estero.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Okay, item 3 is tabled at the applicant's request. So item 4, minor subdivision to create one new lot and adjust lot lines at 7359 Maple Street. That applicant is here, so I'll entertain a motion to take it off the table.
So moved.
Just when you call the roll.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Osborne, go right ahead.
Good evening, Rick Osborne Jr., 7050 Jackson Street, Mentor, Ohio, and thank you for hearing me tonight. We've had this topic on the agenda for the last two meetings, and I know a lot of discussion has gone on. Unfortunately, I was not able to be part of that, and I'm open to answer any of the questions that you might have had. The main goal here is to try to redevelop this property to make it usable and more in compliance with the city codes and the city zoning, and the main idea is to preserve the front building, which used to be a cigar shop, and also to preserve the previously Carpenter Credit Union that's along Maple Street. In order to do that, I'd like to add some land that's in the back of that, which is currently zoned commercial, and rezone that to residential. And in doing that, it would basically meet more of a residential lot that someone could actually buy.
Okay, there was a question that came up at the last meeting about rehabbing the Carpenter's Union Building. Is that still the goal?
It is, it would be. I think that's a good structure to be able to reuse and keep. You would have to try to be creative with it, because there are some challenges inside it, but I would still continue to try to market it as a sale, you know, like that.
Okay, any comments from the administration? Kathy?
No, no, sir.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkovic.
Question for the applicant. The idea to market it as a residential unit, if that was not the case, if someone thought that that was too hard, if that goes away and still becomes a sale of a lot, is that an option as well?
It would be.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be up to someone else.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Is the intention to renovate the Carpenter's Union Building as a residence or as a commercial building?
As a residence, sir.
But then it would be nonconforming relative to setbacks, correct?
Correct, along Maple.
So my gut level with almost all situations is I don't like to go down the road of nonconformance right away, starting with something that doesn't conform. So if it's a commercial building, it could be in that location?
It can.
So it's a nonconformance in any case, whether it's commercial or residential?
Mr. Zeeman, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, we spoke with the applicant, I believe, earlier in the week, last week. Whether or not it's advisable to try to potentially preserve that structure and repurpose it for residential use, that's, you know, a building code. That's for the planning commission, of course, to ascertain. Our main concern, though, is that it's nonconforming relative to its use. It is currently zoned residential. It's not historically, of course, been used for residential purposes. So if this, if the lot split and further consolidation and ultimately that rezoning of the rear portion of what currently fronts on Mentor Avenue finds favor, the only thing that we want to be careful with is that it, the current property owner definitively makes of record an acknowledgement that that structure's nonconforming use, anything other than residential, no longer exists. So that would take the form of a notation on the plat. The structure no longer enjoys any nonconforming use status, and frankly, I'd probably want to work on some deed language as well, so that we have of record to a subsequent purchaser that they can't potentially use this for any commercial purpose in the future. Now, I don't have a, that's a bit of housekeeping relative to clearing up the nonconforming use. Whether or not it should, or is advisable to continue as a nonconforming setback and other aspects, that obviously is for your further consideration tonight.
Is that an affirmative nod?
Yes, that would be agreeable, and again, the building's there. It's a shame to have to knock it down for really no reason if it could be reused as a house.
Mr. Zeeman, any further comment?
Well, it'd be unusual. It's currently nonconforming in terms of its setback, of course. It's currently, I don't know if it meets minimum area requirements for the district. I don't know the footprint of that structure. I think it's, I don't know if it's, there's an additional, you know, second floor in there or what. Obviously, it would be a novel living arrangement for a potential buyer. That doesn't make it a bad thing, although I guess that probably diminishes the probability of it being readapted for such use. Nonetheless, if the planning commission thinks that that's a direction that, you know, maybe a way to go with this, to preserve the structure, I think we can figure out how to make it work.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
If we, if we, we're talking about the, not the empty lot next door, the purple lot, that's now been made residential, right?
It's currently residential.
That's residential. We're talking about the lot that the Carpenter's Union Building.
Well, it's, the purple and the Carpenter's Unit Lot currently are one lot.
Are one.
Correct.
What I was concerned with is the use of the Carpenter's Union Building. If it became a residential use, does it not create now a nonconforming situation on the commercial property that exists on the corner in terms of setbacks or separation? It doesn't?
There's enough space between what would be a residential lot and the commercial building
or lots or parking that's on the lots to the south, the commercial lot?
It would not create a nonconforming status. It's Zoned B2, and there's no...
There's no...
Minimum lot area.
So this could go ahead without it causing additional problems with adjacent properties.
So there are two parcels there. The top parcel, A, is one parcel, and then the Carpenter's Union is on a separate parcel, and they're adding, proposing to add the back piece, which is commercial. They are currently, the Carpenter's Union and parcel A are currently zoned residential now, just to clarify.
Oh, should have, okay.
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 Any other questions for the applicant? You read the staff report, and there's two conditions listed there.
I'd be okay with those, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
When, I believe, your builder is Mr. Davis, correct?
Correct.
When Mr. Davis appeared before the commission on your behalf the first time, I believe he testified, and this can be checked and verified, I believe he testified that your objective was to build a residential home on that first parcel and then use the proceeds from the sale of that to tear down the Carpenter's Union and then put another new residential home on that parcel. So now it's your testimony that that's changed, and you're looking to preserve the Carpenter's Union?
Yes, actually, I was thinking the proceeds could be used to build a garage on the back to make it more suitable for a house.
That's what you're thinking now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The deed restrictions apply restrictions.
Okay. So actually, there'll be three conditions. One would be the plat, the deed, restrictions apply?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So any other questions? I'll entertain a motion if there are no other questions.
I'll motion with the three conditions.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item 5, rezoning of .19 acres. That's still you.
Basically, everything that we've talked about.
I'll entertain a motion to take it off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Jess.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now go right ahead.
We, in order to do what we just proposed, we need to formally get a rezoning of the back area there, and that's what this request is.
Any comments from the administration?
None at this time.
Mr. Zeeman, anything from the law department?
Only that the rezoning be conditioned on a consolidation with the split lot, as indicated in the plan.
Okay. That's okay?
That's okay.
Good. Got a lot of concurrence from you tonight. That's good.
All good.
All good.
Then win.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion with the one condition.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great when you're here, right?
Kids drive me away.
I understand.
That's a good thing.
Okay, item 6, conditional use permit to allow restaurant at 834 Heasley Road. I see that applicant's here. If you'd identify yourself. Now, while this is not a public hearing, there are some interested parties here, so we're going to treat it as a public hearing in terms of information, so go right ahead.
My name is Attorney Scott Arilia with Weston Hurd Law Firm. We are here tonight seeking a conditional use permit for the construction of a Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of Heasley Road and Progress Parkway.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Sure.
My mistake, I didn't take it off the table, so I need to take it off the table.
Okay.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
Jess.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
All right. My name is Scott Arilia. I'm with the law firm of Weston Hurd, and I represent the proposed buyer of the property at the corner of Heasley Road and Progress Parkway, and we're here seeking a conditional use permit to construct a Dunkin' Donuts facility on that property.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak against? Was that a, was that a hand in the air?
Turn it.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Administration. My name is Jerry Rice. I'm senior vice president for the Stairers Corporation. We have looked closely at this there. I know this was put on hold for, till the next, till this particular meeting. We are not in favor of supporting this. We have done our own review. We're concerned about the traffic. We're concerned that we have nearly 700 or plus employees at headquarters. We are in the process of building and adding another 250 space with an additional renovation of additional property that would house, as I said, well over 200 more employees. We have worked very hard on the health and safety. We are concerned with the amount of traffic that's already been developed by the increase of employment that Stairers has provided. The Lake County Health Department has dramatically increased that traffic, and we feel that it would not be in our company or corporation, nor its employees' best interest, to have that particular drive-through available to the individuals wanting to construct the Dunkin' Donuts. We have no objection, certainly with the retail capability and having a restaurant there, but quite frankly, the added traffic, the concern of our public health issues is our issue. And lastly, just for the record, to clarify, last, the individual that represented, I think, Stairers last time at the meeting, I think, commented on a fatality that occurred. Just for, as I said, for the record, that did not occur on Stairers property. It had nothing to do during the two years that were identified. This is a unfortunate situation that occurred some seven years ago, and it was not on any Stairers property. So I just want to make that clear to the commissioners and clear up any facts or misspeaking on any part that was not truly representing Stairers, which I am this evening on behalf of the corporation as an officer.
Very good.
I'll be glad to answer any questions if any of you have any for me.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Rice?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
You stated that you wouldn't mind seeing the property developed, but not as a coffee shop, donut shop? I mean, what is the delta difference between it being a restaurant or some other use?
You have a drive-through. Everything that we have looked at, and the location of that particular area would not be advantageous, the potential, even though it's, I don't know what the percent is and the traffic results that has been looked, I would say inconclusive. What we're trying to do is keep people, we would want not to have the drive-through. You can have the restaurants and that, or whatever other kind of facility that would, our business that would be there, but a drive-through definitely causes us greater issue. And quite frankly, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be here to debate whether the restaurant's the right idea or right property. We're here to contest and ensure our disagreement or opposition regarding the drive-through portion.
Sure.
Majority of that, we feel that during the months that people would not be getting out of their car and going through a drive-through exceeds the number of people that would be potentially going inside the restaurant to have their donut or coffee, and certainly we're proponents of Dunkin' Donut and any other type of appropriate, as you deem appropriate for that type of zoning.
Mm-hmm. So it's just the traffic count, really, is what you, what...
Traffic.
The issue, the issue between some other kind of development and this development, in your opinion, is the traffic count?
Traffic and the health and safety of traffic as a result going into our campus.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may.
Go right ahead.
The Dunkin' Donuts we're proposing is approximately 650 feet south, I believe, of the existing McDonald's facility, which has a drive-through as well. So our proposed use of the property is not inconsistent with the use of, in the general area. We've stipulated that we believe a right-in, right-out from Heasley is probably the most appropriate means of the traffic flow in and out from the proposed Dunkin' site to Heasley. So we believe that'll minimize any impact to the Stairers campus. And as was referenced last week, or excuse me, at the last hearing last month, the concern was traffic flowing through the Stairers campus. We've seen no indication that there would be any increase of traffic through the Stairers campus. As a matter of fact, I think when you look at the maps that are available online, it doesn't even appear that the Stairers Way connects to Progress Parkway. Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if you're aware, in your submission, your figure 2 has eliminated the right-in and right-out with no access directly to Heasley, and has two drives coming off of Progress Parkway. That's the image that you've presented, the figure that's presented to us tonight.
We...
Which, by the way, I prefer. I would prefer not to see another, I would prefer not to see a right-in, right-out with a pork chop.
That's on the traffic study. I don't think that's consistent with what they submitted.
But that wasn't what they should, okay, well, now I'm confused, because there's a plan, it's part of the package, it does not show a right-in, right-out.
Our Plan C2 shows a right-in, but it does show a left-out from, onto Heasley, but at the last meeting, we had indicated that we were, we were very comfortable with eliminating that left-out onto Heasley and a right-in, right-out only.
Okay, well, if the traffic study is based on a different plan, are we getting inconsistent information here?
I don't believe the traffic study is based on a...
I'm just looking at it. It's in the package.
Correct. I don't believe the traffic study is based on the, whether there's a right turn or right turn combined, left turn out of the parking lot.
I guess...
These were simply trips, trips during peak hours.
No, I understand, but trips coming and using an existing traffic pattern, which is the Progress Parkway intersection, and not introducing a new driveway with limited access, because it's only right-in and right-out. To be honest, and I prefer the traffic, the pattern in the traffic study, because it eliminates the second, the additional driveway out into the traffic of Heasley and uses the existing traffic pattern as a basis for putting this facility there.
I would say that we can certainly have the traffic, the trip gen report amended. However, my understanding in speaking with our engineers is that the, that these are simply generated trips to and from the facility without regard to whether or not there's an exit onto Heasley or not, so...
Kathy, a quick question. The city's engineer is the one who recommended the right-in, right-out?
Yes. And if you look at the traffic analysis that was provided on page 2 of the TMS engineer's report, you know, it appears that the trip generation is based on the description of the use, that it has a drive-through, the size of the facility, and then the weekday peak hour trips in the AM and PM. There is not a reference to the right-in, right-out in their analysis. It's, it is a reference in terms of, you know, the actual location, which is why I think the site plan's in there, but it's, in their, in their analysis, it's not describing or it doesn't appear to be indicating that it's dependent on that. And also, our engineer department's analysis was based on the conditions shown in the site plan that was proposed by the applicant.
So let me ask another question relative to the success of right-in, right-outs. Have we found them to be successful in the city?
The engineering department, yes, says, yes, they have been.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Based on my own observations, I don't want to contradict the city, but I've seen the right-in, right-out with the pork chop to be violated on a daily basis all over the city, with the dependency on signage, keeping people from making a left-hand turn from across the, the way I see people violate that all the time. I'm just speaking my own opinion. I don't know if other people see the same things that I see, but I don't see that as a very successful way of entering a site, especially when it's on a corner, when you have an access from a side street that's already there and a traffic pattern that's already established.
Would you be amenable to eliminating the right-in, right-out on Heasley in favor of just the Progress Parkway?
We would be.
Got this signed from the bullpen over there, huh?
I did, that's right.
So commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
As I mentioned at our last meeting, I think it's worthy to note the other objections to this development submitted by OH Technologies, and we're on the record, the Stairers objects, and we're on the record that the building owner, Bob Crowson, 9350 Progress Parkway, he objects.
I asked this at the last meeting, I'm going to ask it, Mr. Zeeman, again, for the definition of conditional use permit.
Oh, sure. 113504 is relevant criteria for the planning commission to consider. And what weight you may give any of these factors, you know, will vary depending on the specifics of the application in front of you. First is whether it will be in harmony with or adversely affect the use of neighboring properties. Secondly, will it adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood? Third, will it change the character of the neighborhood? Fourth, will it be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property? Fifth, is it in accord with the purpose and intent of this chapter, that being the zoning code, and the comprehensive plan of the city? And finally, whether it complies with adopted policies relating to such uses.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I just want to address the point of view of the Stairus Corporation, just to understand. I don't believe... My observation would be that, and I'm open for any comments from the city or any of my other commissioners, I don't understand how the traffic pattern would affect the Stairus Corporation. I don't... There was some suggestion the previous meeting that people would drive through their campus to get to this. I don't see that as a logical possibility, except for the people from Stairus that might come and get coffee here.
I agree.
Or that possibility. That's true. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the comment, but I'm not sure I understand what the safety factor would be relative to the Stairus Corporation. Can he respond?
Sure. Well, I need you up here, Jerry, to respond at the microphone.
The question is, what is the safety concern? What aspect of safety are we talking about?
I guess I wasn't as clear as I should be. When you look at that traffic pattern and the belief that that traffic pattern isn't going to be disruptive, we have people walking through our campus. We have people already. There's drive-through our campus, through our parking lot to go the opposite direction. There's no guarantee that everybody's going to make a right-hand turn, and we're trying to protect the integrity of that small space of area that cuts right through our campus. So with the drive-through, I certainly can appreciate your comment of saying you could look... you could look at it and say, you know, what's the percent of fatality or an injury or a collision of some sort? I can't... I'm not here to be able to predict that. I just know from our administration, from what we looked at, the traffic that we see go through there, the other businesses that have shown the same concern, we would just respectfully disagree that we don't believe that everybody's going to go right. And all you need is enough traffic going to their left. It's going to be a new... It's going to be a new restaurant. People have to figure that out. There's going to be limited signage. And we're either going to close our private drive, which is one of our opportunities, which we would hate to do because that would limit our employees for entry and egress, or we would absorb the cost of stopping people when they got to the campus with some type of security. That is going to add additional expense to Stairus. And concerning the investment we're making in other areas, we see this traffic, and this is strictly based on our employees' requests that came from our employees to us and the administration to request this drive-through be denied.
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to cut through the bushes here. On that Progress Parkway, there's at least another half a dozen businesses, maybe seven. I don't know the exact count. And I know there's other businesses. Could it be that the people who cut through your facility, are those people going to the light, those other businesses? I mean, this will be right on the corner. I don't know why people would go away from the street they're trying to go to.
I'm not trying to manage the logic of this. I certainly see your point. I can tell you from our security and safety, we wouldn't be bringing this objection to the commissioners or the planning if we didn't have a serious concern about that. And quite frankly, the discussion that we've had in the past with those other businesses, they go the direction closest to the... to Heasley Road. And what you see, what we've seen in other occasions is, I think somebody mentioned it earlier, when you see those drive-throughs, and depending on the times, you're going to have cars backed up waiting to go through those drive-throughs. And either they're going to get frustrated, they're going to take the closest way if they're not familiar with that particular drive and traffic pattern. We think there's a sizable amount of traffic that's going to go left that'll end up on our campus. We don't... And quite frankly, the others unite a way. And we've had these conversations. They're the closest ones to us, and they respect the fact that they make their left, if you will, coming out, going on towards Heasley Road. So I understand the conundrum that you find yourself in, but I can only speak for our employees and our concern, and we don't... we want... we don't want to create an accident waiting to happen, even though I respect the administration's position of their traffic reviews. I can tell you, after being there for 25 years and seeing the growth, I've seen a pretty strong picture of what the traffic pattern is. And when I look at the expansion and the amount of parking spaces we have on that particular campus, I think that pretty much speaks for itself as far as the amount of traffic that we're getting. And quite frankly, we're working with the Health Department because they come the opposite way, and they then will cut through the campus, maybe if they're going the opposite direction, to beat one of the lights, if you will, on Heasley Road. We've had discussions with them, and they've... we've asked them to reduce their traffic, and they've been very, very helpful. There's been a very mutual understanding there. I hope that helps answer your question, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
Any comments back from the administration?
Only with regard to the right-in, right-out concern.
Okay.
Specifically. I guess I would ask the commission to take into consideration, if you eliminate that right-in, right-out, then you're going to put all of the traffic on Progress Parkway, and you're raising the concerns of what some of the other businesses already did bring up. At least by having the secondary access point directly onto Heasley. As the traffic report indicated, you're splitting the amount of vehicles that are going either from Progress versus also then going directly on...
So the southbound traffic on Heasley would use that right-in, right-out?
Correct.
Northbound traffic would use the Progress Parkway exit?
If you eliminate that, then everybody's using Progress, and then you are raising the concerns that some of the other businesses already brought up. That's the only point I wanted to bring up, just something to think about.
Okay.
If you are considering that.
Okay.
Like that.
Which one?
The right-in, right-out.
Okay.
Of course, as the bullpens indicated, we're willing to...
Willing to forego that, should we ask to have that foregone?
That's exactly correct. I completely agree, though. I think the southbound traffic coming out of the site would be dissipated more quickly.
Do you have any response for Mr. Rice's comments about traffic going through their property?
Respectfully, I think we're speculating as to what traffic will go through the campus. And I'm not sure what we're defining as the campus here because my understanding is that Stairus Way is actually a dedicated public street in the City of Metter, so... and Larry's shaking his head, so maybe that's incorrect. But Mr. Rice has indicated that the other business owners on Progress Park have said that their patrons typically use the quickest route to the facility.
Right.
Which is Progress Parkway. So I just... I don't see the logic in why our customers would take Stairus Way and go completely around the block in order to get to the facility. The quickest way in and out is Progress Parkway or the right-in from Heasley.
Commissioners, any questions? Any additional questions? Anybody at all?
On the table, we still... The thing we're voting on is the right-in, right-out on Heasley.
No, actually, what we're voting on is the drive-through.
Well, there's the restaurant as a conditional use.
First.
Correct.
We're dealing with item...
And the drive-through as a conditional use, and then preliminary site plan.
Yeah, we're dealing with Item 6 right now.
Correct. That would allow the building, exclusive of any drive-through facility, to be located at this location.
And that's as a non-conforming?
No.
It's an exception. It's a...
No, a restaurant use is conditionally permitted in this district.
It's a conditional permit.
That's why we went through the litany of what is a conditional use permit applicable for. So any additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, one clarification. What are we motioning on, just six?
Just...
Item 6.
Okay, I'll make a motion on 6, on the allowing a restaurant.
So with the right-in, right-out stays?
With the right-in, right-out.
Stays.
That can be reserved for the preliminary site plan.
Okay.
So it's just the use?
So this is just the use, the CUP on a restaurant?
Correct.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now, Item 7 is a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility. Mr. Zeeman, any additional comments?
Let's see.
Kathy, any additional comments?
No, I don't.
Commissioners, any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
For the administration, is there any thought at all to a traffic light at that intersection with Progress and Heasley? Has that been raised at all?
That has been analyzed by the engineer department, and the traffic counts don't justify it.
The traffic counts are justified after a Dunkin' Donuts went in? Or was it taken in...
In total, with the existing businesses and then the added use. It's still not...
Come up to the number?
Plus, the issue is, is you have the light that was installed...
Stairus Way?
Stairus Way. It's too close.
We put a man on the moon in 1969. I think we could time the lights appropriately. Just a thought. Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Drive-through facility.
I'll make the motion to allow a drive-through facility.
I'll second.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
No.
Order 3, it passes. So you're doing okay?
Doing all right.
You're doing okay. Item 8, preliminary site plan of a restaurant at Heasley Road. Entertained a motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Okay. Preliminary site plan.
Preliminary site plan. The existing site is approximately 1.21 acres. Our proposal is to construct a drive-through facility with... that's approximately 2,050 square feet. We have 30 parking spaces, which include two handicap spaces. And the proposal is a right-in, right-out onto Heasley Road with an additional ingress and egress onto Progress Parkway.
Okay. Questions? Any comments from the administration?
No, I'll need to consider the conditions for the preliminary plan approval that are noted in the staff report.
Okay. So we're wrestling with the idea, apparently, between the right-in, right-out and everybody exiting on Progress, so am I correct?
Yes.
We're wrestling with this?
Well, that's the question, but the proposal is right-in, right-out.
Proposal is right-in, right-out, except the applicant has indicated they could go either way on that, correct?
Our preference would... that is correct. Our preference would be the right-in, right-out.
So why don't we stick with the right-in, right-out?
Perfect.
Mr. Varga, any comments? Okay. No additional comments, I'll entertain a motion. You've read the staff report, you've seen the conditions. You agree to the conditions?
The one condition that we do have a issue with is Item Number 2, which is the 30-foot setback. I think we're at 28 and a half feet. We're about 18 inches apart there. So my understanding is we're going to need to seek a variance in order to allow for parking up to the 28 and a half feet.
And you have no problem with eliminating the 90-degree angle?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Zeeman, any comments from the administration's legal department?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
If we make the motion, Item Number 2, the condition for the 30-foot setback, is that going to be struck from the record or just adjusted?
We need a 30-foot setback, correct? So if that stays, then they've got to go to BZA for the less than 30-foot.
Yes.
So it can stay.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve with these six conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Okay. You're good.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're going to collect the fees tonight, right?
That's right. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Number 9, informal rezoning of 3.51 acres. Does that stay? Mr. Viviani, does that stay? That's the Society for Rehab rezoning? What are we doing with that? I mean, if you're not prepared to go forward, that's fine, too. Okay. So that'll stay on the table. Architectural review, reimagining of a commercial building at 7900 Plaza Boulevard. Is that applicant here? If you identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name's Fred Margulies with Onyx Creative, and we are here to refresh the building for a new tenant. The old H.H. Greg building, and we're looking at changing colors. The shell of the building is going to stay the same color, but the entry elements that you're looking at here, and as you can see what the existing conditions are and what we are changing to. The main sign facia and element over the top is the everyday white. That's what we'd be going to for the background for the Burlington sign. And then the element over the eyebrow would become the cherry's jubilee color that you see in the upper part. And then the two column elements would be another color that would be added to the mix that works with all the rest of the existing colors, the utterly beige color that would define the columns for...
Okay. Now, are you taking the whole space?
Yes.
Okay. So Burlington will occupy the whole H.H. Greg building?
I believe they are, yes.
Okay. So I have a... Are you representing Burlington or are you representing the owner?
I'm representing the owner.
Okay. I noticed in the parking lot, some of the landscaping islands have trees missing, dead, half-dead trees. What can we do about that?
I will definitely bring that back to the landlord in terms of obviously making ready. I can imagine Burlington wouldn't want that either, obviously, in their...
Well, we don't want it.
Sure. I get that. I understand that.
So I'm going to put that in as a condition. So with your concurrence, that'll be fine?
I'll definitely bring that up to... Yes, absolutely. I mean, from that standpoint.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
If you know, what's becoming of the Burlington building now where they occupy? What's going to become of that space?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It'll be vacant.
Is that a different... in a different center?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. We were talking about landscaping, and I... I'm sorry I haven't visited the site, so I'm only speculating on this, but there's a... I'm sure there's a painted crosswalk from the parking area to the building, and there's... is it... I asked the city this, has anyone looked to see if the painting of the crosswalk and things of those nature is sufficient? Or does that have to be renewed or refurbished also? And if they're going to take care of the landscaping, they might want to make sure If they're gonna take care of the landscaping, they might wanna make sure the crosswalk.
Why don't we put that in as a condition, and if it needs to be attended to, it can be attended to.
Because if I'm not mistaken, all those buildings have crosswalk zones coming from the parking, going to the buildings.
Why don't we do that? Is that okay with you, Mrs. Mitchell?
If that's okay with the law department.
Those are all maintenance issues, and quite frankly, I would expect many of those to get addressed through reoccupancy and site inspection, including the landscaping, any required striping, making sure that, you know, we've got handicap spaces in appropriate locations. So it could be a holistic review of the site prior to reoccupancy.
There we go. See how easy it was? So. Any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Let me ask a question. Have we made a second condition, these maintenance items?
I would think so.
Just make it collectively?
That's fine, obviously, those code requirements exist independently, but to the extent you wanna add that as a condition, that's, that's fine, it doesn't.
Site ma, site maintenance issues.
Since we have a representative of the owner here, I think it's appropriate to do it.
Can be useful to point out some of these noted deficiencies as early as possible, and to the extent they get corrected before city personnel are out there, all the better.
So is that a motion?
That's, yes, that's a motion with two conditions.
Second.
Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set? And leave the sample board, Larry, do you want the sample boards?
I can have it, yeah.
Because we're gonna hold you to the Cherry's Jubilee. If not, we'll have it for dessert. First item, a new business, minor subdivision, adjust the property line between two parcels at 6121 Brownstone Court.
Hello. My name is Dem Yousnack, the owner of the property, and this is my husband, David. Is this for we? We are asking to purchase this sliver of land. It's a piece of land that we've been maintaining since we've owned the property. The previous owners maintained it as well. We were ha, we are having drainage issues. I did send over some photographs, I hope that you received them.
I think we saw those.
Where the water trails through. In order to repair those, we have to go into that property, and, which we thought was ours. And so not only would, do we want to repair and fix the drainage issues, but we would also like to give ourselves a little more elbow room, which we thought we had. The, I took this off of the Lake County Auditor Site. This is the corner of our porch, our back porch. The current property line is right here. That would only be 10 feet. So if the next owner or the current owner puts up a fence, we're right up against the fence. I was hoping to purchase half of the portion that comes into our property, just to give us a little more elbow room and to straighten out our lot.
Commissioners, questions? Administration, have any comments?
None at this time.
So we're creating a non-conforming lot, is basically what we're doing. One of the lots will be non-conforming, is that correct?
Correct.
So, let me ask this question. If you purchased that little sliver, how does that help you solve the drainage problem?
Well, because the, I call it the river, runs through there, so it'll allow us to put in drainage tiles, go through that area to the drain tile that's in between the, the drain tile is right here. So this would be our other neighbor's house, so we'll be able to take and curve it through like this. Does that make sense?
Sure. Okay, any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sidoti.
Instead of acquiring that property and creating a non-conforming lot, would you be able to negotiate and secure an easement, a property maintenance and easement that would allow you to fix the drainage?
Honestly, we, if we put money into this project that we wanna do, we wanna essentially own that. I don't wanna put money into something that is not ours essentially. Also, the second part of it is to give us a little more elbow room as well, a little more, make our lot a little more square. So there are two parts.
So, Mr. Zeeman, question on the, on how would an easement be attacked here?
Well.
If there was an easement, that would go on perpetuity, would it not?
Correct, they don't necessarily have to, but that's, that's more the general tact that they take. Easements can have all sorts of different variations. They can be for a specific purpose, such as utility line, drainage. The easement could allow the holder to, you know, utilize the property for some other purposes. You can have easements that, for example, preserve a view amenity so that nothing can get built, or some type of obstruction such as a fence can't be constructed within the area of the easement. So there's, there's all types of different varieties. It, it sounds as though, though, the, what the applicant indicated is that that's only half their, half their motivation here, they want a bigger backyard, apparently. And easement doesn't, isn't a fee simple, and so the easement would not allow them to construct a shed in that area, because we would, we would not consider that their parcel at that point.
They could, Mr. Chairman. They could have a use agreement for the easement area, though. I mean, it could be not only for the drainage purpose, but they could have full use of that space.
Sure.
Other than what would be affected by codes and setbacks.
Correct, obviously, we wouldn't allow any structures to get constructed in there.
Would they put a fence around it?
Again, the fence would have to be conforming with respect to the lot on which it's located. So the fact is, they, they could probably put then, put a fence further, you'll see the.
In the middle of the, of the northern property.
Yeah, you'll see where they've, they've red highlighted around the proposed area, that top line. Our code would allow them to, our code would allow that property owner to erect a fence at that red line, just as they could erect the fence on the actual south border of the property. So, so yes, they could get a fence in there, as long as it's code compliant.
So that, that would grant them use in any way other than building structures?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, they could use it for, they could landscape it, they could.
Yes.
Maintain it, they could.
Right, and easement is only one species of land, right? There's also licenses that can be obtained, although a license generally is terminable, whereas easements are perpetual in nature. Although, an easement can be extinguished.
And the only reason I question this is that, I hesitate, as I mentioned before, about creating a non-conforming use, or a non-conforming lot, which now, that also is now in perpetuity as non-conforming if we grant the, the land.
That's correct. That may affect future, I don't know the depth of the, of that rear parcel line, where it may have a practical implication as the future owners of that property would wanna put a rear addition on, something of that nature. But it looks like a pretty deep, I defer to planning, of course, on that, it does look like a pretty deep lot.
I have a question for the city. How did this lot get shaped this way? It's like a problem waiting to happen, which is, I mean, is this, was this recent?
I don't know when.
I mean, I noticed the fact, too, that the corner, this inside corner of this property is literally feet away from their house.
In the zoning, oh, which way does it go? In the zoning history, it says that it was approved in 99. The plat was approved by 2002.
Well, okay, it is what it is.
Just to speak to that, this lot, Brownstone Estate, or Brownstone Subdivision was built on one lot. If you look across the street, it has the same little notch in it, because those lots on Hendrick's extended back. Not sure, I think it was Mr. Brown, which is, I can't think of the builders, that did this subdivision. I'm looking at you, Mr. Chairman, I hope you remember.
I remember Mr. Brown, but that's about all I remembered.
But they own the property and they subdivided it based off of that one piece of land.
Senator, I remember nothing else.
So that's why we have these little notches on these two lots.
All right, Ed, sure.
Regarding taxes, let's say that we did do the easement, would then the person on Hendrick's be paying taxes on a piece of land that technically is shared? How does that work?
Yes, they, they get the tax bill. The easement can provide for annual contribute, contribution payments to that property owner, just like, you know, maintenance and other items of a monetary nature would be addressed in the easement.
So does that answer your question?
I'm not sure if I'm gonna go through that.
Mr. Chair.
Right ahead.
Now, you wanna tie your storm onto this corner lot?
It's not a storm drain, it's the way that the, I think I can sort of give you a picture. Sort of the way that the backyard is. It's this portion, there's water all, you know, all over in the woods, but this right here, it's the way that the land was sort of dipped. And then it trails along our back, along Hendrick's backyard, the property that we're looking to purchase, and then the storm drain is at the end, but it doesn't connect because there's holes and there's stops because the land is built up.
Chairman. Since we're getting, it sounds like we're getting to stormwater management a bit, and one of the issues that we, I note that engineering didn't have any comments, but they may not have been aware that the applicant, if this were approved, may want to change some of, some of the, the surface flow, either via drainage or fill or something of that nature. I don't have the full, you know, history of the subdivision in front of me, but that, that may either be a natural swell, or it may have been part of the grading plan to make sure that, you know, we get adequate surface drainage for storm events. There's mention of a catch basin over there, obviously, that, that suggests strongly that we have stormwater management infrastructure some in there. And this, this may be wet, you know, intentionally, or it may have been naturally wet and therefore intentionally left that way. I'm wondering if whether or not engineering should, should be heard on that issue, and have an opportunity to, to, to be posed the question as to whether or not there can or should be, or if it's a good idea to have any changes to the storm flow there.
So you wanna give them an opportunity to weigh in on it?
I think that'd be advisable, that, that does seem to be a very strong motivating factor for this lot split, and I don't know how heavily the commission may weigh that in its decision, but again, engineering may not have been aware of that desire when it indicated it didn't have any comments, it may have just been looking at the zoning aspect of it.
So if we postpone it for one more meeting, is that okay? I mean, you've been living with it for quite a while.
I know, I know, right, and that would be fine. I do also would like to have you take into consideration just the fact that, you know, the way that our backyard is, that, you know, it doesn't give us much room for.
Larry, do you know if there's a similar problem across this side street?
No, I do not.
Okay, I mean, I think we ought to look at that, too.
Actually, it looks worse across the street.
I'll entertain a motion to table this item.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. So Kathy, does that give the engineering department an opportunity to evaluate this before the next meeting? Do we have them evaluate it before the next meeting?
Yes, I mean, I, I think I would encourage that the applicant reach out to the engineering department to specifically talk about the plans, because we only have some photographs. So maybe we could get with you in terms of setting up a meeting with the representatives of engineering, just to kind of go over your.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Architecture review, reimagining a commercial building at 7841, 43 and 45 Mentor Avenue. Put a smile on that face. Not that bad.
Good evening.
Hello.
We represent the owners for Mentor City Shopping Center. We're looking to do a facade renovation that we have displayed here. This is how it looks right now. That's the center as it is now, and this is pretty far back from the road, the major anchors in the back there. We're looking to renovate the facade, to raise the back, make the stores better seen from the road, and to renovate the side, update the, the side view on the Aldis side of that.
What happens to the north end of that second strip?
North end of the second strip?
Right.
Here, or?
Yes.
That, this is, becomes, it cleans up, right now it's just a white band, it cleans up the white band, and we put a new metal roof there. There's a, there's a grade change here on the sidewalk, so it steps down along that grade change.
Yeah, by the way, Marco Lukowski with RDL Architects. The sign band is increased in height. I know the recommendation was to carry the height all the way across, and we felt that because of the small shops and the small signs, a smaller sign that would be, band would be much more successful. In addition, we wanted the retail, this portion to stand by itself and not, and.
Not give the appearance that it's tied into the other end.
Sorry?
Not give the appearance of it's tied to the other end?
Exactly. So that was.
Kathy, any comments back from the administration?
I guess, I guess a question for the architect, in terms of the, the main retail space you're trying to feature, and the roof line appears in the, in the posed west facade, that the metal roof is shielded, but it wouldn't be in that northern section. And I guess that's what we were concerned about, we were looking for more consistency. So could you just speak to the, the metal roofing that's seen at the north end versus what's, it doesn't appear to be visible in the center portion?
No, the, it would not be visible, and this is totally renovated with a higher parapet that would, so there is no roof or any kind of sloping roof visible in that portion at all.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sidoti.
The retail space that you show here in the center, that you want to distinguish from the rest of that building, is that designed for a single use, a single user?
Potentially a single user or?
Or multiple users. Right now, it was a single u, two users at one time. Our prefer is make this one.
Right.
May split into two and have retail on both sides of those, but I prefer, I just obviously fill it with one tenant.
Then on that new widened band, that's where the names of the retail units that exist, that's where that'll go?
The, the smaller stores to the north of that, that's where they're at now, the signs.
Barbershop and.
Yes.
The children's activity center.
Yes. Yes, Katie Jemba, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, commissioners? Bring the sample boards.
Just a smaller version than what you have up there. And by, digital reproduction, obviously, doesn't give us the accuracy we want.
Yep.
These are the actual samples.
Okay, and the extreme right goes where? Of the sample goes where?
That's number one.
These are, they're all identified per numbers. When you say extreme right, you mean the brick?
Yes.
That is the existing brick that is there right now, and that is going to be used in the, in the four, in the three columns and the, the retail, this, this major element at the bottom here. So they'll be matching the existing bricks that's there now.
Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
We received an alternate one version, can we talk about that, because?
It's the one they had up there.
From the one you have, we made adjustments. We put the, we agreed with the administration of putting the corners. And that's what we're, that's what we're talking about tonight. That was the one recommendation.
But in terms of the, again, to go back to that northern section, it looks like the sign band is wider than the alternate one version versus the one that we're looking at?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
That looks, are you sure that looks the same to me?
So I guess the question is, is which one?
This is the one. This is the one.
The one that has a four-foot dimension is the one.
Which is the one.
So which is the wider, with the wider sign band?
Right.
Any comments, Kathy, on that? Is that fine?
I think we would, we would prefer to see a wider sign band. At least it looks more consistent.
Yeah, we agree with you. That is the direction. That's what we're showing here also.
And the cornice detail will be on top of the three signs, which does not show up on, but it shows up there. And it'll be the repetition with the side.
It'll match, it'll match the other side.
Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Given that you get the approval, when you anticipate commencing with the renovation?
All goes well, we plan to start before the end of the year. We have a, we have a potential tenant for the Babies R Us.
Good.
So this will tie into their, you know, tie into them coming in also giving us a fresh view.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
On the side, where the side elevation, where you have the single retail section that's shut, and you have six bays there, and you said, well, maybe it's one. One tenant, maybe there's more than one tenant. What happens if you, I mean, if you only have two tenants, now that becomes kind of like who gets the sign, who doesn't get the sign? Would you be altering that? I mean, would you, I'm just trying to think ahead. I mean, this is fine if it's one tenant, I don't have a problem. But if it's two tenants, their names go on both sides and then you've got this big gray thing with nothing on it, right?
Well, if you have two tenants, you can split the gray with each name.
Or you could put, you would try to put both signs up there on the upper part.
Again, our preference is one tenant always.
Okay.
But our option is to put one on each side.
All right, and if you would have three tenants, then you have three different places to put signs. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
And the Babies R Us, you're looking at potential one user, one, for that space?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's not signed yet, so I don't want to know.
No, I understand, but one user.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You'll leave the sample board with Larry?
Yes.
Larry, you've got a lot of sample boards coming tonight, buddy.
Thank you.
It's better than actual sample.
I know. It's lighter.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Laney's review to amend the approved development plan at Center Street, Erie Bank. So before you begin, let me ask the law director a question.
Yes.
What do we have to do here? Do we have to identify the plan as a substantial deviation from the approved plan?
Or not, as the case may be. Correct. And it's actually the, yeah, the specific language appears in 113708 Changes to Development Plans. Again, this was a rezoning and it was a ballot measure. I think, as everyone's aware of the history, that project that was approved failed. There were a variety of factors for that. And so this lot has approximately a little over an acre, although I think the actual buildable area is under an acre, exclusive of the right of way, has sat vacant since that project did fail. So the, if the commission finds the change to represent a substantial departure from the intent of the previously approved plan, then the process starts anew, which in that case, you know, means to treat it as a new rezoning effectively. So specifically, the operative term of art is, is it a substantial deviation from the intent of the new plan?
So any additional questions regarding that? Okay. Mr. Zeeman, how, do we form that as a positive statement?
Either way, as long as it's clear, you know, whether the vote, it can be stated either way. It doesn't.
And we're only voting on whether it's a deviation or not. We're not really voting on, we're not getting into the nuance of the.
Well, you are, because this is a request to amend it. And the foundational question is, is it a substantial deviation from the intent of the approved plan? That's a foundational. If you can't, if you don't have that to build on, you know, this inquiry is done. If you, you know, resolve that in favor of this moving forward, then you get into the details of the planning and.
If we say it's a substantial deviation, that would require a no vote?
Correct.
Okay. So why don't we phrase it as that? Is it a substantial deviation, yes or no?
Okay.
And if we say no, it's not a substantial deviation?
I'm not sure that that's an inquiry that you can answer. You know, until such time is, there's, I know you've got all the information in front of you, but obviously the applicant may want to answer any questions on that specific issue. So I don't know how procedurally you want to, you know, handle that if you want some presentation of information from the applicant to the administration before you get to that point.
What's the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to see that ahead of time?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
May I suggest that we receive a presentation and that at the end of the presentation, we determine, A, if it's in substantial agreement or conformance with the regular plan, and then we vote on the plan itself.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr.?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. So go right ahead. Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
So I'm Jeff Kaney, the developer. And the proposed plan, we contend, is in substantial agreement with the previously approved plan. The proposed plan includes both residential and commercial components, six luxury townhouses, approximately 2,225 square feet each along Center Street, eight standard townhouses on either side, about 2,000 square feet each, and then three additional townhomes on the western part of the parcel, and those are just less than 2,000 square feet each. In addition, there's a 2,000-square-foot commercial building along Center Street on the northeast corner. And that would be, while we don't have a specific tenant identified for that space, that would be ideal for a coffee shop or a wine bar use. So while it's an efficient use of the space, this plan with the 17 townhomes and the commercial space is less dense than the previously approved plan. So in the analysis, there was a comparison between the previously approved plan and this plan. And essentially, the previously approved plan had 24 units. This plan has 17. Density was 21.6. This plan is 15.3. Number of buildings previously was eight. This has five. You know, and there were a few more comparisons. But in light of the similarities, we contend that it's in substantial agreement with the approved plan.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I've already seen this plan and I'll just make a statement. As a design professional myself, I see this as in compliance and is more sophisticated and in some ways much better than the original plan. But I see it as in conformance. I just had one question. I noticed that on the south side, the adjacent property, which at this time is just a number of houses, is shown as being a future commercial property. Is that something that's going on? Is that proposed?
So that is not included in this?
I know it's not part of the plan, but I just, as part of the overall, I'm interested to see if that's actually.
I've had conversation with both owners of those two lots and, you know, it would be, I would jump on an opportunity to.
But it's not, it's not proposed, it's not, okay. But, okay, that was my only statement and my only question. Thank you.
So the question now is, is substantial deviation or is it very similar? Correct, Mr. Zeeman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sedoti, since you brought it up, you want to make a motion?
Yes. Motion noting the planning commission's concurrence that the plan amendment is in substantial conformance with the original plan.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Just to clarify, so a vote of yes is an approval?
Yes, it is in substantial conformance.
It is.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. So that was good, right?
That was good.
Now we go with the plan, right?
You get to hear all about it.
Okay. Any additional comments relative to the plan itself?
Yeah, Demet Architects here. Maybe you could say just a few words about the aesthetics and the finishes and. I'll say that I did read the conditions and, you know, I agree with all of the conditions and will satisfy those.
I'm Scott Demet from Demet Architects. Basically, we've been just asked to address the massing of the building. There are three-story townhomes. We spent some time working with the zone along Center Street to establish a kind of a landscaping buffer. And additionally, those six prime townhomes are raised up from the street level.
So just let me interrupt. Where's this picture from?
Hello?
Where's the picture from?
This would be from the corner, looking from Center Street to the northeast.
Okay.
So it's basically, you're looking at that small commercial building, a representation of what that might appear like as a one-story, as Jeffrey pointed out, a cafe or a wine bar. Shows a sort of an ample area for sidewalk spillout. And then you're seeing the six prime townhouses fronting Center Street. In that darker area, those are sort of covered porches where these bays project out on the street. So it has more of a historically sympathetic type of massing. There's walkout spaces on the top. And we were anticipating using brick to tie into the historical district, mix of cement board and stucco on the side faces in the upper levels. And we saw that same general approach wrapping on the eight townhouses that are on the, sort of the edges of the property that you see at this side and also on the back, the back tier, like three in the center.
Okay, any questions, commissioners?
Have a question.
Oh, right ahead.
I understand that the commercial space is less determined because you don't know who's going to be in there. But can I assume that you will control the general architectural image of that kind of building? I mean, right now, it has an interesting and image and it kind of works with the corner location. And, I mean, not that I have anything against McDonald's, but I would hate to just see a standard McDonald's building dropped into that location. So as part of the project, you're going to control the imagery or the architectural image of the commercial space?
Yes.
I see you saying yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so regardless of who's in there, you will have control over what that looks like, the massing and the architectural detail?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. I recommend you do that now. There's a specific rendering. It shows finished materials. It's got general, you know, composition. I understand some of the elements may change depending on the specific use. Let them come back and make the case to change some of those elements. I understand there isn't an identified tenant and it may not even get built right away. But this is the old village. And so we don't pursue into those district regulations, leave architectural control open-ended. So if this is what gets approved, that's what gets built. And yes, obviously, there could be modifications, you know, based on, you know, whatever would merit them. But the commercial building should look like this.
So that being said, can you, this presentation includes the commercial imagery and architectural expression as part of our review?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that satisfy you?
Yes. Just, I'll have a few housekeeping items if the commission's ready to address them.
Mr. Cook.
I was out on site today and this, your standard townhouse, 15, 16, and 17, it talks about an opaque glass there on the decks. Well, I walked into this house on Presley Way. They're building it now, this two-story residential directly behind. And you're going to be able to see right down into those houses. So I think we need to protect the privacy of those people on Presley Way. So I think, even though there's a nine-foot vinyl fence there, we're going to have to come up with some sort of foliage or something that's a 12-month foliage. Because I was standing at what will be the master bedroom. And I looked out the window and it's going to be imposing right there. So you've got to come up with the city ar, excuse me, or something to shield that.
Mr. Chairman, let me add on to that. We had had a preliminary review of this and that was one of the points that came up about, about, your building is three stories, the house is one or two stories. It clearly is going to be sightlines that will be obvious that you'll be looking up at this building. I think the concept was at least looking up at the building that you wouldn't be looking directly into the units. Looking down, I don't know that landscape because of the depth of how far the house is away. I don't know that you can do anything at your perimeter that would keep them from seeing the house.
I mean, I could only scale off with what you have here and it looks like you're about eight to 10 feet off that vinyl fence that's there. It's going to be tough, but I know if I live here on Presley Way, when someone stands up on that deck, they're going to look right down.
Is this, this is not final architectural review, is it?
No, to the extent it's an issue that can get addressed tonight. Again, if the applicant's ready to address it, it's certainly ripe for consideration.
So the question to you is that we need to address that. We brought it up before, bring it up again. The thought of the viewing angle is in two directions. Control it the best you can and then to present that at a future date as to how you're going to address that.
So the two thoughts were landscaping and about the balcony that comes out, make it opaque so that it's not, you're not able to look at a perfect angle downward. You know, you can still walk up to the edge of the balcony and look over.
Maybe making it a little higher than what would be normal to, to cut the angle.
Yeah, the combination solution there was landscaping and the opaque balcony.
Some sort of landscaping that's going to be there year-round.
Yeah.
Like a King Abercrombie or some, I don't, I'm not an arborist, but something like that.
We had, that's what we had discussed with the architects as well, so.
Good? Good? Mr. Cook, you good with that?
Another thing I had is the, no exposed downspouts. And if so, have them be decorative. Because when you start stacking these up against each other, they start looking a lot like spaghetti coming down.
Yeah, I think we mentioned that too before, of not seeing three-story downspouts to have them incorporated.
You can do them internally.
And if you have to put them on the outside.
We would slope these roofs towards the courtyard in the center. So none of them will be on the outside face. They'll all be on the garage side. So more or less protect them from outside view.
Anything else?
That's all.
Comment?
Just, Mr. Cook actually addressed a few of those items. I think they're concurrent with some of the conditions in the staff report, addressed a few others. One final thing has called to my attention. This has been a vacant lot and barren for quite some time. So to the extent this may get constructed in different phases, we may want to see some sort of a phase plan. And as I just indicated earlier, maybe that commercial building doesn't get built on spec and it waits some indetermin. some indeterminate amount of time for a tenant and therefore to get constructed. It might be appropriate then to have some sort of a phase plan where if the construction isn't undertaken, we get some landscaping improvements in there, something of a permanent nature, be it lawn and some decorative ornamental elements so that you don't get some, you know, vacant hard earth there. So, that's something for...
You'd like it as now?
Correct.
And has been.
Correct.
You can do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should that condition...
If necessary.
You're going to give us a phase in?
The...
Phasing plan.
Yeah, phasing. The current idea is phasing the construction.
Okay.
Where do you want to start?
Thinking in the back toward the south, the floor on the south and then...
Build to the street.
And then go to the street.
All right. Well, I would like to make a condition, an additional condition, that any undeveloped property over some period of time, and we'll fill that blank in before I'm done here, would be landscaped in some park-like fashion if, after a certain period of delay. What would be the commission's desire as to how soon they would need to do that?
Any recommendation from the administration?
Eight months of on action on any piece of property?
Well, part of that with the phasing plan is we're not sure exactly what like hard surfaces they would put in, you know, throughout the site, whether that interior parking would get constructed even if only one building were being constructed, for example. So, that's where, wondering if there was a phasing plan where we could address, you know, those different contingencies.
Did they come back with a phasing plan?
Yes, obviously. And I apologize, we've been communicating quite a lot on this project. That was just something that was kind of called to my attention fairly late and seems like a good housekeeping item because, again, we don't necessarily have specific time periods relative to some of these elements being constructed.
So, we could make a condition that there is a phasing plan?
If that's their intention, if it's going to get under...
And that the requirements of the phasing plan would be addressed at that time.
Right. And again, solely to make sure that we don't get some vacant space in there and that, again, if something doesn't get constructed for whatever reason, that we'll have a nice landscaped area.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Good. So, is that a motion?
That's a motion and let me see how many, so that would be with seven conditions, the seventh being the requirement for a phasing plan.
And when do you want to see the phasing plan?
It would have, it would have to be final, yeah, final.
Is that okay from your standpoint?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Second.
That was a motion, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Should that condition have eight, which the eighth condition be the opaque balconies and the tall evergreens that was mentioned probably previous?
Okay, we could...
Well, I think the opaque's in there now.
Yeah. Would that be, we could deal with that with the final, at the final, do a review of that condition? So, we wouldn't have to be conditioned, we'd see it at the final.
Does the planning commission desire some type of rendering or perspective view just to make sure that privacy is addressed in the manner which Mr. Cook expressed and another...
Sure.
At the final. Right. Okay. So, does that, and now I'm a little confused.
Are we clear on all these conditions?
There is only one condition.
Depends on what condition your condition is.
Yeah.
What about the concern that when the commercial structure is developed, it'd be done so, that so that conforms architecturally with the residential component? Take care of that later or we're...
Well, we can do that as part of the final.
Okay.
Yes, I would suggest we wait to do that for the final.
Right.
So, we have seven conditions. So, let's go back, there's the, seven conditions.
Got it.
The seventh being a requirement for a phasing plan.
Okay. So, was there a second?
There was a second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. We're all set.
Thank you.
See the shovel tomorrow? Shoveling the ground tomorrow?
Yes, sir. We're going to kick it off.
Final subdivision, 21 residential lots at Becker Avenue and Lake Shore Boulevard. Mr. Novak sitting very patiently in the back.
As I always do.
As you always do.
Good evening. My name is David Novak, Darington Consulting Group, and I'm here before you this evening. This is a project, it's 32 single-family residential lots. The current zoning is R2 and we're going to, we're not looking to rezone it and these lots are started at Lake Shore and head north along Becker Avenue along the west side of the street.
So, let me ask a question. Why did it, why did the 19 months transpire? Just out of curiosity. Maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't answer it.
There were a lot of things. Primarily, again, we, you know, we almost started from ground zero. We went back and we looked at the wetlands and things like that and had a new wetland study done and so forth, which took much longer than we had anticipated. Just some slowness because of the amount of work.
Got you. I'm just curious because, you know, occasionally, we do do extensions.
Well, again, and I, you know, I apologize for that and I'd like to kind of talk briefly about that. I thought we had already had final on this project and I apologize for that and when I had submitted the drawings, I was told, no, we didn't have final and we needed to come in for final. And even if you look at the agenda this evening, you know, we're item number 14 and it says final subdivision review. And the staff, it's my understanding that there was even some confusion within the staff as to whether preliminary approvals expire or don't expire and so forth. So, I would like to ask the commission to consider this to be final, not, because again, we've been before this mission multiple times. We've, we actually even went to final. I don't remember exactly when it was, but that plan got scrapped and we started over.
So, let me ask the administration a question. Any concern with making this a final? I mean, does that, does that change the flow through the departments?
I mean, they've submitted information considering, with the assumption it was a final. There are some conditions, though, that need to be resolved, that may need to be seen again, but if the commission does not object to the, it being considered final.
What's changed from the preliminary?
I think the number of lots and so forth have changed, but again, the documents that we provided to the city would have been the documents that we would have provided for final. I think that's what Kathleen's kind of alluding to.
So, I think there's some concern about the consistency of the road and how the road is.
Correct, and we object to that condition.
Of course you do.
Very strongly because, again, I, it's, and we have some legal representation here to really discuss that further, but it's already a public road and it's, you know, under the preview or, you know, the requirement of the City of Mentor to maintain that road and take care of that road and, or the City of Mentor to expect a developer on an existing road that's already under the control and maintenance of the City of Mentor to have us rip that entire road out and bring it up to standards, I'd really be, I think it'd be hard-pressed for the City of Mentor to show us where within the city that's happened before.
Mr. Zeman, any comment?
We see it most frequently in the commercial development, obviously, minorities having to put in a turn lane to accommodate that impact on the roadway. I think it hasn't necessarily been developed, you know, with as much particularity as maybe is necessary to have this conversation with the developer, but engineering is concerned with the impact of these additional, this additional subdivision on Becker. As the planning commission may be aware, its use has been limited in the past by engineering, particularly with respect to the Marshview Landing build-out and whether or not it would, it could handle heavy truckloads. Apparently, it can't from what I've heard and has been restricted relative to that use. Currently, it has very little traffic and so what engineering is concerned with is the specific impact on Becker of this, of the subdivision of the western portion of Becker Avenue and whether or not that impact is such that improvements to Becker are necessitated specifically by this subdivision. That, I think, is a discussion that is fair and reasonable and we can certainly have the engineering engaged with the developer to address some of those concerns. As you know, there is a change to propose to Becker. We have to get a cul-de-sac back there and so there are some elements, there are some elements where Becker has to change. To what degree? Obviously, they're taking exception to tearing it up and putting in a new roadway. Understand that that's significant expense and perhaps some middle ground can be reached. I don't want to say yes or no to that. That's, I'm not an engineer. We just know that engineering is very concerned about this specific impact on Becker.
So, we can, we can come to the conclusion that we can work on that in ongoing dialogue?
It's certainly a discussion that we'd like to have. We understand that there's an objection. The objection is noted. My recommendation is treated as preliminary tonight and between now and final, you know, we can get some good dialogue going with the engineer's office and the developer and see if we can reach some middle ground if possible.
It's like the attorney wants to talk, so...
Good evening. I have my sheet as well to turn, to turn in. My name is Eric L. Walter, one of the attorneys for the Osbournes and Dworkin at Bernstein. I got notified of this yesterday, so I appreciate your having us here tonight and I appreciate Mr. Zeman. I'd be more than happy to talk with him. I just want to note a few things as we always do to make our money. If you recall, this was dedicated in 1929 and at that time, there was the White Hill allotment, which was originally scheduled to have 32 homes built there. It's my understanding there's half a dozen homes, maybe less, on that road, but it was originally dedicated and built with the idea that there would be 32 homes. Our proposal's 21, so our position, and we are willing to work with the legal department and engineers, but our position is even with our 21 homes, with the seven or six that are there now, you're still underneath that 32-house threshold that was originally specified for this sub-development. The issue we have is it says the developer shall improve or reconstruct the entire length of Becker Avenue. I've done research and I really don't, I would like to work amicably that our firm tries to do that, but I hesitate to say this has ever been required of a developer. As a matter of fact, I think there are some instances where a very similar development has been put down and the road was allowed to stay as it was. With that noted, I've looked in your sections, there's 1115.03, which is construction of roads, there's 1117.02, which is general, then there's this 90701, which is about cleaning roads, and other than that, there's not much that I know that's out there. And so, our concern from a legal standpoint is, and I agree with Mr. Zeman, I think we could work, but our position is you cannot make us tear up an existing dedicated road from 1929 and put that on the onus of the developer. And I'll just mention these and then perhaps we can have discussions later. I think ORC 711.09 talks about you cannot make that a prerequisite unless certain things have been met. And there's several cases that I can cite tonight. One's RG Dunbar Incorporated versus Toledo Planning Commission, 52 Ohio App 2D 45. It's a '76 case. And there's another case out of Toledo, which is McCain versus Toledo City Planning Commission, 26 Ohio App 2D 1971. What's curious with these holdings is that a planning commission, and I just, I think this is imperative to kind of consider, it says the developer of a subdivision may be required to assume the costs which are specifically and uniquely attributable to the activity that's proposed. The additional homes right now are contemplated in what was originally contemplated in 1929. There's been no development on the east side. We're talking about the west side. But what is a little more curious is, it says the municipality may require the developer to provide streets which are required by the activity, but cannot require him to provide a major thoroughfare, the need for which arises or stems from the total activity of the community. So, I think that's kind of where we're coming from is we would like to work with everyone. We'd like to get, because I think it's a benefit to the City of Mentor. You're going to have some new homes in an area that would support that, but I am hard-pressed from my research and looking at the City of Mentor, of this ever requiring any developer in the city to tear up an existing road and reconstruct it. So, our position, and I talked to Mr. Zeman, I have my cards with me tonight, that's our position and that is where we're coming from, is we do take exception to, exception number two as to what we would have to do. I don't think it's ever been done in this city and quite frankly, I don't think anywhere in northeast Ohio may be solen. I think Mr. Zeman's right. In a commercial setting, yes, but here, we're dealing with an existing 1929 road that we wouldn't, I was more than willing to work with the engineering department, but I want that noted for the record and I think there are some severe issues with being able to put that requirement on the developer. So, thank you.
So, that comment, you agree to work with the city on some sort of resolution to this?
I will talk to our clients Tuesday. I believe there is some way to resolve this.
Okay.
I don't think making us put in a whole, the entire stretch of Becker Avenue is workable at all.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Well, as I indicated, yes. I think the engineering comment was very broad and I think getting more specific as to the exact impacts from this development and how, and whether it can be addressed is something that engineering wants to work with. I spoke with the city engineer today on this issue and so that's what I'm relating. They are concerned about the specific impact. Obviously, this was, this was probably gravel at best when it was first constructed and so we had a very, very different environment than back in the 1920s relative to what our standards are for roadways. So, things have dramatically changed and we don't want to get to the point where, at the end of the day, you could always do a special assessment and assess the property owners, the value of the, you know, reconstructed road in there. So, that's one extreme and obviously is a municipal power that the city has that has a direct impact on these parcels as well. So, if there's some middle ground that satisfies the engineer's office and allows for a roadway that's safe for the future residents in this area, I think that that's a discussion that can be had.
I just have a question. Are we saying, so that I understand, there's a concrete road there now and that concrete is 89 years old?
No.
No, okay. Because that's, the first thing I thought of is it's not that, that road has come and gone if it's 90 years old. Yeah, okay. So, how old is the concrete road that's there now?
It's not an, it's an asphalt road.
Asphalt, okay. It's asphalt.
I don't know that we have good information relative to the, what base, if any, is under that asphalt.
And we, so we don't know what the specification is? We don't know?
Non-conforming with current.
All right.
That's one thing that's assured is it's far afield from what's currently required.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. It was just information.
So, we're going to treat this as a preliminary then?
I'd recommend preliminary, keep the condition, but understanding we'll have a lot of discussions with the applicant on that issue.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Right ahead.
It doesn't have to do with the road. I see that you have these two blocks of space, Block A, which looks like it's two existing or three existing houses on there that you're leaving in place. Am I reading the drawing correctly?
Give me one moment here.
Sure. It may not part of the, it's not part of the subdivision, but it's an area within the subdivision that you're not developing, but...
Right, because there's, I mean...
Is existing residences there that you don't own?
No. The Block A is land that we own and then those four lots that are actually on Francis Avenue.
Well, that's not even part of Block A. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, correct.
Oh, it is?
So, there is nothing on Block A currently.
Okay, so your Block A is only the lower portion of it. Those four lots are part of a, separately owned and are addressed off of Francis Avenue.
That is correct.
Okay, so what is the proposal, what's the future proposal for Block A?
It would just be open space for the rest of the development.
Okay, so it would never, that could be, there's no plans and that would be accepted or removed from future development. It's just going to be landscaped or something like that, public common space. There's no other plans for it. And the same for Block B. That's the, all the land beyond the last lot. It appears that there's some...
Well, and Block B, I believe some of that land that's north of that may be, that may be subdivided off and kept as a... may be subdivided off and kept as a, as a park for the marsh, but the part of Block B has the turnaround on it.
Right, I see that.
There'd be a right-of-way.
No, I see that, right, and the right-of-way.
And if you look in the, in the improvement drawings, if you look just to the north, there's a wetland area there.
And a stormwater management.
Right, and we're putting our stormwater pond and so forth on that.
But beyond that, you don't have any future plans to build or construct or subdivide any of that land in the future?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Chairman.
Right ahead, Mr. Cook.
I'm looking at all the lots here, and they're 88, 80, 80, 80, 80, and Sublot 5 is 60-foot frontage. Is that a typo?
No. What you're missing is, is there's, there's actually an angle point in the road, so you have the 60.97, and then the 19.04.
Okay.
That constitutes the entire frontage of Sublot 5. So, that's going to be?
80.01.
80.01.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Stand in motion. You need to put a condition in that you're going to negotiate with the property owner?
Obviously, their objection to condition number two is noted, and between now and final, we'll have some discussions with them.
Okay.
See, that would be six conditions? That would be in the sixth condition, the negotiation.
You don't have to, I promise we'll do it.
She'll do it.
I guess I, I don't have a problem of discussing it with the city, but I can tell you that when we really asked the question to get some clarification, we got one answer from engineering, and then it looked farther in. They had a meeting that I precipitated but wasn't invited to, and it's my understanding that the city manager was there, the city engineer was there, and I believe Kathy Mitchell may have been there. And the information that was relayed back to me after that meeting was, the city wants that road ripped out and reconstructed. So, again, we're more than willing to have that discussion, but again, I just want to make it part of the record that, again, we tried to go down that path and try to have that conversation to see exactly, because even with the design of the subdivision, what we envisioned, because there was so much concern about the integrity of Becker Avenue, that 90% of our construction traffic, we were actually going to drive across our property so that we wouldn't be riding on the pavement surface down Becker, so that we wouldn't be destroying it or causing further damage to that road.
See, but the beauty now is you've got the law director involved.
And I've just, again, I just wanted to, we're more than willing to have that discussion. I'm just saying that, again, I want to make sure that we both come with, with an opportunity to discuss it.
Go ahead.
Has any testing have been done of the existing round surface, or the, you know, coring of it, so that we know what the surface is, what the subsurface is?
Not aware.
The bases?
Not aware.
Would that be necessary to really evaluate the, the existing condition?
That's possible.
I'm just throwing that out as, might that be a requirement, something that would come up in your discussion?
I'm sure it will.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't know. It doesn't need to be a motion.
No, I mean, you ready to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Motion to accept as preliminary with five conditions.
Second.
Is there six conditions?
No, just, just five. The sixth would have been.
We're not adding six.
He didn't want that.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Final site plan architecture review of a commercial building at 7827 Reynolds Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Steve Franzak, Director of Planning, LRC Realty. I'm accompanied by David Burkert, who's Director of Design and Construction, and Fred Margulies, who's our Architect of Record. We are in for final approval of our site plan. We have met with staff over the last week. They have made some recommendations. I would like to start by briefly describing the site again, and I'll be brief, and we'll let Fred reintroduce the building to you. The site is located on Reynolds Road at northeast corner of Tyler Boulevard. It is currently occupied by Angelo's Cleaners, and the intention is to demolish the existing building, and we're excited to bring a Starbucks to the city of Mentor. As I mentioned in our preliminary approval, there are two existing access drive aprons that are going to be closed off, one being here along Reynolds, and one being here for Tyler, which, which are for the existing building. The Starbucks will be built and utilized the existing right-in, right-out along Reynolds, along with the existing Tyler Boulevard.
So, and those are, those are the Bravo properties, right?
Those, yes. We are the owner of both the Bravo and the corner piece.
Okay.
So. We've got a little prettier picture here. In conjunction with meeting staff two weeks ago, they made a couple of recommendations. One is raising the rear parapet, and some of the planning commission members made that comment. Fred will address that in a second. Along one of the other conditions was the fence enclosure around the patio provide for some bollards and some protective devices, and Fred also has a detail he'll show you for that. Some of the other comments that we've already updated is, we were, it was recommended, we had this long row of parking here against Bravo. We have added an island and a landscape area. We have straightened the sidewalk. There's a little, kind of a corner here where the existing is going to meet the existing, where the existing access apron is. We have straightened that out. We've added some additional landscaping at the hard corner, and we are in process with Lake County approving our lot split plan. We're just modifying the lots a little bit, and that should be coming here next week. We're, we're in agreement to all the other conditions for final approval, and I'll introduce Fred, and he can show you the building.
So, as Steve said, when we went back, we looked at a couple of different things. We did raise the back parapet eight inches, which, when we did all of our running calculations of the heights of everything, that was adequate for a complete screening of the HVAC. The base building is made up of the three shades of brick, the main one being, the main feature brick being the top end here. We have a darker color that is a feature element in these back areas that kind of coincides with the window breaks as we, as we see this. And then the light is a good separation and a nice texture in between the two different brick colors. We have an eyebrow that goes around the building, around the front, that would be this light gray ephes, and the black awnings that highlight the glass areas and, and provide nice screening. And I know that the tenant will come in with signage eventually in terms of where they're going to place their signs on the building. And we have a base of a polished concrete block that is, that is at each of these column elements, and then a natural anodized aluminum finish for the facade. One of the things we did speak about, obviously in the last meeting, was how the patio was going to work and the concerns that people did have, that, from the standpoint of protection, because it is the main drive coming in. So, we did enlarge it so you can see the seating, obviously, and how, you could see the quantity seats, but, and how this railing system was developed into a decorative fence with a bollard coinciding and acting as the fence itself with a four-inch square bollard with a cap, and the fence, and the decorative fencing that is attached to it. So, the, the customer is protected. One of the other items that I did want to bring up, just to, because we do have, as part of the submission, we have, we have shown lights on here. We wanted to make sure, obviously, I don't want to, we have lights at the corner elements, and we are looking at a fixture, you know, and I'll throw out a couple, you know, some, something that we're looking at, some, they're all similar in nature, a little slightly vertical, a little glow, a little downlight, possibly a little uplight, but in principle, that they all work well with the building. We just haven't made a final decision, but as you can see, that all, they're all of similar nature in terms of what we're looking for.
So, you've incorporated the bollards into the fencing. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yes. We didn't want to see bollards and fence. It just didn't.
I can't, I can't imagine we would want to see it either.
Right, exactly.
We'd be happy to share that detail with you when a different applicant comes in, and would like to see how other people did it, but we think it's a great detail.
And it's all black.
There's some great bollards throughout the city of Cleveland. There's some great bollards throughout the city of Cleveland where they, they've done it for traffic control. And, you know, it's always nice, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, we don't want to see like we're tying off freighters every time we put a bollard in.
Oh, no, yeah, when someone's driving, they're going to see a fence. They're not going to realize, identify the fact that this is security, safety.
Right. Larry, do any of those lighting concepts work, under the city's lighting ordinance, or not work?
The code requires that all the lights be fully shielded, no uplighting. I'd have to take a look at the spec sheet, the cut sheets on those, to verify if they meet the intent of the code.
Yeah, I mean, all the fixtures we are looking at, if they are an uplight or a downlight, are a glow that might go a foot or two above the fixture, that type of, we're not looking at major uplighting or anything. These are more of a glow. You know, everything else is a sight lighting.
Okay, yeah.
Submit the cut sheets to us, and we'll take a look at them.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment on the landscaping?
Yes, sir.
I think since Mentor at one time was the rose capital, it might be nice to see some roses, which is introduced into some of these landscaping elements.
We can do that. In fact, the revised landscape plan, which you don't have, but includes knockout roses right in front of this corner element.
That was where I thought it would be perfectly applicable.
They, they do show up on our newly revised landscape plan, which will be part of the submission for building permit. One of the other comments that we got through the workshop meetings was, is we've, we've also added the hedge on this side of the parking, where previously, we only had it on this side.
Now, did you say you own the Bravo building as well?
We own both the Bravo building and the corner piece. Yes, sir.
I noticed Bravo took out some trees along, along 306.
We had that discussion in our, in our, in our workshop meeting. You're absolutely correct. There are some electric lines that run along Reynolds Road.
Okay.
And I believe Bravo, which started out as a cooker in 1996.
Originally, they wanted to stay in the building yellow.
But the trees?
No.
The trees were obstructing the electric lines.
Okay.
And the trees came out. Now, I'm not sure if the trees came out because it was directed by the utility company, or if it was Bravo's or cooker's choice to take them out, but there's some serious overhead lines there, and those trees are gone. And if you notice on our landscape plan, we do not have street trees for that reason.
I'm sure, as I said earlier, man on the moon, 1969, I'm sure there are some trees that we can find that won't intrude on the wiring.
We would certainly be happy to work with the arborist, and putting some trees 40 feet on center, which I believe is, is the street tree requirement. We aren't showing them here, but yes, you could do some ornamental trees, and we would be happy to consider that.
See, because, because the stumps are still there.
Yes, yes, they are.
They are.
I see you visited the site.
I'm very familiar with that site.
Yes, there are stumps there. I did, I did see them too, but, you know, perhaps we can get some type of ornamental tree there, and you might see us here down the road with the Bravo building later.
Okay.
And we would want to match.
I think the consistency of match is perfect.
And there, one of the conditions here is that we, you know, get through the landscape plan one more time, and that's one of the conditions for final approval, and we certainly work with the city on that.
Okay, good. Five trees on Tyler. Did you see that?
Five trees on Tyler.
Yeah.
In the plan.
In the plan. We had a little discussion earlier today about how many trees there were on Tyler.
Yes, and you'll see them on the landscape, on this pretty picture plan, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Perfect.
They are there. They're also included a hedge, and we had a conversation a month ago at preliminary about screening the trash area, and the landscape plan does call for substantial screening of the trash enclosure area, which matches the masonry facade of the building.
Did we, did we know earlier than this evening that you guys own the Bravo site?
We, we have owned the Bravo site. We have just recently purchased the corner piece of Angelo's Cleaner.
Because the reason, the reason I mentioned it is, I had some discussions with the city earlier today, and I said, I think those five trees are on the Bravo site. Well, now, tonight, it makes me feel better, the fact that you guys have both sites under your control.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Just, just as a point of reference, we've only recently purchased also the Bravo site in the big picture. It's been a few months.
In the big scheme of things, you bought it?
Yes.
In the big scheme, but it's only been a few months. We haven't been landlords for the past, you know?
That was my question, just a few months.
Right, just a few months ago, Bravo, and less than a week ago, we acquired the corner piece.
Go ahead.
So, just to give you a frame of reference, we didn't cut down those trees, you know?
Go ahead, Mr. Sedoti.
Just as a point of information, what's going to become of Angelo's tailoring business?
Well?
Is he relocating, or is he retiring?
I'm just a lowly planner, so I don't know for sure. We are demolishing the building.
Mr. Sedoti wants to know where he's going to take his clothes.
Seriously.
I don't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Is he being given any relocation benefits?
Not that I am aware of.
Progress moves on?
Okay, so here we are. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the eight conditions.
Second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. It looks like anyone ask a question.
No, I just want to thank you for a very nice couple of meetings, and you'll probably be seeing our faces again shortly.
Shortly. So, do you have, you have the building materials for Larry?
Yeah.
Anything to lighten my load.
Anything to make Larry's life heavier. Guys, thanks for doing a good job. Now, your building is the same one you built in Concord Township? Or is that?
Similar, you mean the same Starbucks building?
Yeah.
Similar, yeah.
Okay, just curious. Miscellaneous review to amend the approved development plan at 8150 Mentor Hills Drive. There he is. He's back again.
Good evening. This is all right. My name's Gary Bialas. I'm with Omni Senior Living, and I am back again for another site that actually I was kind of guided to by the city.
That's good.
I want, I know there's, I'm on to... I want... I know there's... I'm on the agenda for two items. One is to see if I'm in substantial compliance with what was previously developed. I want to go out of order just a little here, since we did talk to both the Symphony and Heartland to see what their, you know, to work with them, and to know that we want to come on the site. So I do have John Tucker here from Heartland, and he's been here all night. I'd like to leave staff to come and say something about, you know, our project, just so he can leave. He was up at the state.
It's only been two hours.
I'm John Tucker from Heartland at Menher, I'm the administrator, and I'm just here in support of this project. We'd love to have them as neighbors. I know that has not always been Heartland's stance when we've talked about neighbors in the past, but it is our stance now. We would love to have these guys as neighbors, thanks.
Okay.
And all that goes with it.
And all the good stuff that goes with it. Okay, thanks.
So now you go home.
I think the reason that they had me come is, I think we as potential neighbors in the past have been rather contentious and boisterous.
Is Vera Kek still around?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
No.
Just curious.
No, it's in a trust. It's in a trust now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Because there were some contentious...
I remember them.
Issues, so I thought we'd get that out of the way first. So as... let me just point out where we are here. Can you zoom in a little more? Okay, yeah, thanks. That's good. So this project comes off of Menher Hills Drive, and this location comes all the way up, and Menher Hills Drive, which is a public road, stops at this location, okay? So you have two projects here, you have Heartland and Symphony, that are already developed, and we're looking at taking this parcel right here. There were previous, I think it was 19... if you look at the staff report, 1994, there's a previous development plan here, which had quite a more... quite a bit more. It was, at that time, it was the memory care, and they had planned on, I think, 52, or 52, they call it Alzheimer units, and 151 or two bedroom congregate care units. All they ended up doing was actually the memory care Alzheimer units, so they never went forward. There's been other plans, there was a plan in the 2000s, which showed a development that included this parcel here, this parcel and this parcel. Those are all owned by Kek. What we're looking at is this parcel at this time, okay? So it's not as big a project. We may look at this future, but right now, it's really this parcel. And our project consists of memory care. We have small, it's only 16 units, so I think that's why they feel we're not competing with them. Symphony, which is a rehab facility, probably looks forward to us because we have assisted living, or independent living, that those individuals could possibly go to them, which would be a benefit to them. So now it's more of a campus-type use. Just to give you an idea, the property here is outlined, this property, this is actually a property line of Menher and Kirkland Hills, and this is the property line between Menher and Kirkland Hills. So it's kind of almost its island on its own, right there. This property does go all the way over here, and this is also Menher in this area. This is the college, old property right here, in here, and this property right here is Kek also. So she still owns this parcel, this parcel, and that parcel. And the project, I was saying, was in 2004, there was, I think, Gross Builders had a project plan for this parcel, this parcel, and that parcel. And at that time, in their proposal, they also talked to tie into Garfield Road as part of their parcel. But I'm just talking about zoning now and really not site plan, so I do think we're substantially similar to what was previously zoned for and approved. I know we're making some changes because we're a different type of buildings, let's say, but it's the same uses.
So same goal here?
Yes, Mr. Sheen.
Okay. Mr. Sedoti, you want to make the motion? If you think it's in substantial conformity?
What was the administration's recommendation?
It was.
Yes.
It was. All right, all right. Based on that, motion to note the planning commission's approval that the proposed plan is in substantial conformance with the previously noted development.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Yes, when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Move on to the next item.
Yes. Preliminary site plan approval.
Yeah.
So I have submitted packages. Let me go with this site plan here.
So let me ask a question. Is that a ring road around the site now?
Well, there's easements on the site, which are... There was actually a lawsuit back in, because I think it was the, it might have been Heartland who thought there was no easements. This is Kek put in easements throughout here, and let me go back to this, and I'll show you where the easements are. So at this point, right here, where the Menher Hills Drive stops, there's easement that runs all the way across here, across this property, goes out to Garfield. So doesn't mean anything's built there, but it's a cross-axis easement. That easement also comes up this road here and comes all the way up to here. So it loops the entire site, and it goes out to there. So right now, this Heartland project is actually going through this project to get to its road. The memory care project, Symphony, is actually going through this easement to get to there. So they're really going across this property, even though it's really undeveloped. There are two roads, and you would not know it, but they're using them. So in that case, we would also use those easements to ring, let's call it ring the property. So that should give you an idea of, yeah, this road right now is existing and feeds this property, and this road, even though it may not be, there's no parking on it, it just goes right across and into their property. So those are...
And that'll stay?
Yeah, those stay. This, we have the right, but in the easement, it may shift a little, so we can put parking along that road, but it will stay, yeah, and this will stay, even though the easement says we have the right to move them.
So does that give you access to Garfield at any point?
Well, that's what I have to, and that's one of the conditions here, I have to still talk with the person attailing the estate, because I don't have that right to tell you I can do that yet.
Okay.
So, and this is a small...
You can have that discussion.
No, we didn't have that discussion.
Oh, you can have it.
I can have, I will have it. The question is, and I know previously there was a plan that showed it going to Garfield, but it was a larger plan than our plan, as you know. You just look at our traffic study, and I think, I mean, the other plant had, I don't know how many hundreds of units.
330.
330 units, and they were, some were just apartments, I think, right?
Yeah.
Our plan, our plan is, we call it 55 and over, because that's what it is. In our, in the independent living, we have, the youngest people we have are really 75 to 85. And then we have assisted living and memory care. There is, you know, and I looked at traffic too, and we showed our, we did a traffic study, and memory care, nobody drives, assisted living, nobody drives. You have about 50% of the people that are in independent living do have cars, may have cars, and could drive. The rest of the traffic we get is really some visitors and our staff. So I think, you know, we only have like 26 to 30 cars in the peak hour, which is the 7 to 9, or the 4 to 6. Those are the two peaks we have to look at. So I know they talked about 150 units, and we're going to have all this traffic, and we should go out to Garfield. I'm not saying you shouldn't go out to Garfield, I have to see if I can...
I'm just going by the fire department's comment, one drive access.
Let me ask you, is, would it be different if it was an emergency access other than a drive access?
I think they want access, right?
Yeah, it was because of the number of runs that they currently make to that campus.
Right.
And then increasing the number of residents is going to...
Increase the number of runs.
The number of runs. They were concerned about making sure that there was a secondary means of access, should something prevent them from accessing...
No, and I understand that, but there's two differences from building a road that is for pedestrians.
Right.
That's 24 feet or 30 feet wide versus...
I think based on Ms. Mitchell's comment, it's access point, secondary access point.
Okay. Well, let me talk, I do need, before I can agree to that, I have to get permission, so... But as I finish on the site plan, just so I can go through it, so we have memory care, assisted living, and independent living. Independent living is 55 and over, like I said, it's still 75 and over. We have that knowledge from, we have a facility in Westlake that's open, Townebridge that's open, Maslin, Strongsville. We have one in Copley that is under construction, and one in Stowe under construction, and one in Solon that will start in the beginning of November. But with the knowledge of what, you know, who's here, we have, and I don't know if you'll, I'll tell you a little more about our project, just so I can. First, this tip, this is what the project would look like. It's brick, it's stone, it's siding, it's more of a, we want to look more of a homie look, a lodge look. I won't get into these, it's black and white, but this is actually Strongsville. This is the lobby you go into. Our facilities have, it's, we call it all-day dining. What it is, is we have a restaurant, we call it a restaurant too, it's open from 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night. It's included in your payment, your rent, okay? It's not extra. So it's there for people to eat, there's no reason to go off-site or anywhere. Also, when you pay your rent, everything's included. The utilities are included, cable's included, everything's included in your rent. We also have drivers, so a lot of people don't have to drive as much to take people to doctor appointments and other places. It's just part of the way we operate our facilities. The other items we have is, this is with movie theater, there's a swimming pool, this is called a demonstration kitchen, when the chef, once or twice a week, comes, and the mirror isn't shown here, he cooks here. What you're not seeing here is all these chairs where those other people can sit and watch. Or they get together is where somebody says, "I'm going to want to, I'll show you how I cook my favorite chocolate shop cookie recipe," and people sit. The whole idea is a lot of community for us. This is salon, and then this just goes through our amenities, which I think you have packages of all this. One thing to understand, on our site plan, though, the way it's set up is each of these buildings, they're all interconnected, but its interconnection really is for staff. Look, assisted living here, it has its own lobby, it has its own spa, it has its own dining room. Independent living has a few more, it also has a theater in assisted living, has a little more facilities, they, they have a, we have a pool in there, we have exercise room, it also has its own entrance. Memory care's the same way, it has its own, it's right in here. The purpose of that is, each, memory care has to be more kind of locked down, you don't want people wandering off, but we find that people from one stage of life don't want to really see people from another stage of life, which is unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. So you come in, and independent living has all their facilities for themselves, memory care is everything, assisted living. That's why you will see three separate entrances, and actually three separate kind of parking areas. That's how it's set up.
Okay.
I know I submitted landscape drawings, but this is only preliminary anyway, I have to come back.
Do you have rose bushes in the landscape? Rose bushes in the landscape?
Well, I was just talking to Larry, I just want to make sure, because one thing we should worry about in elderly is, you don't want to do stamped concrete because of walkers and things, and I don't want to put rose bushes too close to walkways, because if they do fall, unless you have roses without thorns on them. Do you make one?
I don't know.
I'll find out.
Get back to us on that, will you?
I will.
Okay.
But I looked at, I'm fine with the conditions, except I can't agree yet to the one condition, so can I come back at final and...
But you'll have some discussion with them.
Yeah, with the attorney that handles the estate. So I guess the one condition I can't really is the...
So why don't we change that condition? You'll have some discussion with the attorney.
Yeah, yeah, and then I guess my next, after this, assuming that I get approved, is final site plan approval, right?
Correct.
And then I can answer it at that time. It will show on my plan if I can get it.
I mean, isn't it clear that they need the second, I mean, among us, on our side of the table, isn't it clear that they need the second means of egress?
Yeah.
I don't know that we want to change the requirement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend keep the condition, we can note their exception to it, and see if there's any resolution prior to final. But, you know, when the fire department says it needs an access to do its job, then hopefully we can find some solutions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I think, you know, this project seems to be in conformance, and I don't know, but there's a great deal of property behind here, and just as a kind of a secondary conversation.
Yes.
Is there any, is there any master plan or anything that, because I can see this property, the rest of this property, becoming a problem in the future, without access or without a master plan or without some kind of direction, it's going to get squeezed off and then just become another problem for us to deal with in the future.
Right, this is the other property right here.
Right, now, I'm looking at this little diagram here.
Which?
Yeah, this is there. It's, the bulk of this property is there, it's to the city border, right?
Yeah, it's here, and here, not this piece, because this is...
Right, no, I understand, that's a separate piece.
We've had discussions, we actually have, these are both options, we have two options. Option of that property, we have an option of that property. The reason, I really want to get going on this project, I, you know, so what we have planned for back here, I'm just going to tell you, is it would be more of a villa-type setup, where there are houses, like 1,300 square foot houses, they have the same benefits as here, but the problem with this back property, I'll be honest with you, we have to work with streams and wetlands.
Right.
And it could be a lot...
Well, and my concern is future access, you know, you have to be able, you have to be able to get there.
Well, what happens is, there's actually an easement that runs here and here that would service this property.
Okay, that's fine, I just...
Yeah, no, we are looking at that.
I'm just saying that we're looking at this right now, and we know we need the second exit now, and especially if anything happens, they need to look downstream here to see what's happening.
And I understand, and we didn't want to confuse it by talking about that yet.
I understand.
But we would, we would like that, and we would have, we know we needed the access. But then that access, this might be different than emergency access, it might be actually a...
Yes, I think so, which is part of the conversation you need to have.
Right.
Got a motion?
No, it's not a motion, it's just an observation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Just one question, it's not really a planning question, but is there any federal involvement in terms of the structuring or the financing for this project?
Federal, no. Just to give you a background, in Omni Senior Living, we are a private equity fund, so we raise equity, then we go to a bank and raise, but this is what we call, it's private pay. You really, you can't use federal funds for your room, so it is...
Thank you.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the four conditions.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
See how easy it was?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. We didn't even have to waive the 1030 rule.
We're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Director's report.
So this is a follow-up to one of the requests of the commission to see the updated landscape plan for PCC airfoils. John McFarland has been working with the applicant, and has come up with the updated plan that you see there, which we have considered acceptable. So we just wanted to make sure that, that you did see that, and it was going to be moving forward. The, obviously, the height of that structure was a concern, so there's some, I think that says blue spruce that's going to be noted there. They'll go in at a height of around six feet, but obviously, they can get very high once they're full grown, so it'll be a, a slow progress, but, but it'll be better than what's there currently.
Gotcha. Anything else?
We have, as we mentioned at the last staff meeting, we've been working on an updated template for our staff reports that we wanted to share with you tonight, and, and, you know, you don't have to, due to the nature of the time of this meeting, you don't have to belabor over this too long, but if you wanted to take a look at it and make any comments for us, the idea again was to hopefully simplify this from a presentation standpoint, and maybe a little less narrative, and more factual in terms of the presentation of the information. I think, you know, especially when we get into these 17-item agendas, you know, these staff reports are, can be very lengthy, and they're extremely time-consuming, we want them obviously to be useful and productive, and we feel that this still meets that purpose. There are two that you're looking at, one would be, as noted at the top, for conditional use permits, preliminary site plan, final site plan, architecture review, re-imagining, rezoning, and miscellaneous reviews, and then the subdivisions would be under a separate one, because they had some different data blocks that we felt were more relevant, including, say, minor subdivisions would fall under that. Again, so you'll see things, and Center Street's a nice example of, you know, we had put the information in, in a table format, which was, we thought was nice and easy to follow, and easier for us to put together, instead of trying to come up with a bunch of extended long sentences that says the same thing in the table. So this was a group effort, I do want to extend a thank you to Kayla, who's here tonight, she spent a lot of time on this, and making corrections as, as Larry and I sent them back to her, but if you have any thoughts on them, or any concerns, any suggestions, we're happy to hear that, but we would like to start implementing those as soon as possible. What's that? And then lastly, Mr. Varga had indicated a desire to have a work session on RBG, we haven't forgotten about that, just had a lot of things ahead of us. I was going to suggest, maybe we consider having a work session at the next meeting, I don't know if there was a possibility of meeting slightly before the regular meeting in terms of time, I don't know if that's doable for the commission members.
For the working guys?
Yeah, so say like a 6 o'clock start time before our meeting, rather than having it on a separate date, which would be nice.
Rick, does that work?
27th? Yeah, I can make that work.
6 o'clock, Brian?
6 o'clock, I'll make it work.
Yep.
6 o'clock.
And then maybe we can have a, I guess, a discussion, it's been some time, it's been since, I know, we, we're still working on the PED process, by the way, and actually, that's going to go back to council for a, another look at here at their next meeting, but we haven't visited this formally since September of last year, so it's, it's been a year. So if you have suggestions as to, you know, you know, our first, first set of talking points, you know, that would be great.
Maybe I can get some things to you ahead of time.
Okay.
So before the next meeting, we'll do it at 6 o'clock.
Yes, does that work, Jess?
I'll even send out an email reminder.
I was just going to ask if you could do that.
That will not, that will not be televised?
No.
That will not be a public meeting?
We don't, no, we don't need to do that.
Just a work session.
Whether or not it's televised, it will be public, of course, but.
Well, I guess, I don't care, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, that depends on staffing, whether or not it's televised, I really don't know how that, how that would flesh out, absolutely, it will be a public meeting.
I was thinking about exhibits, you know, if, if we need to talk about short, looking at stuff, if we have something, you know, we need to think about the, if it's going to be televised, I don't know.
Generally, the council work sessions are not, I mean, the minutes are taken, and as Mr. Zeman indicated, they're all public.
They can come in and sit down if they want, right.
But they're not televised.
But we will advertise for it, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Kat?
All I got.
9:35, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Yes, please, may I have another?